Appreciate everyone being here. Everyone had time to look at the agenda, any changes, comment on the agenda? By family?
Yes.
Okay. Everyone had time to look at our minutes from our previous meeting?
Uh huh.
Any questions about that or concern? Put that on the agenda. If I found that. Personnel status, we'll go over that, look at that, there's been a couple, as usual, there's been a couple of changes. I think we've got two that's fixing to go to mandate school from the, that's actually been in jail. They may have already left on this session, but not been any major changes. Any questions on that? Okay. Board appointments, confirmations, right now, Don, anything? Nothing there for you? Any capital, splosh, capital equipment? Not right now, don't have anything.
I don't know, well, maybe, it depends on Jamie's report.
Well, yeah.
We can take it when Jamie does.
We can go back to that if we need to, yeah. We don't want to let him make any change orders, that's sure, you know? But move down to the approval of ARPA expenditure, Day County Fire Training Center. Who wants to represent that, who wants to come up and? Ansel or Jared?
Ansel. Okay, we're here tonight, you know, we talked to y'all about two months ago, I guess, about the property over at the old landfill to build a public safety training center, which would be utilized by the sheriff's department, drug task force, all the fire departments, and then I imagine anybody else that would need it to train in. What we want to do tonight is present you what we've found and the pricing we found and have a short video, and Ansel's gonna go over that and explain to you everything that comes with this.
And it'll be a fire hall too, is that what you, it'll be an action station?
There eventually is.
It'll be a engine station?
Yeah, there'll be an engine there eventually, it just takes time to go out to build the building, so. But only Ansel will start, he's got a presentation and we'll go from there, if y'all have any questions, just call us.
All right, so like Chief said, this is Public Safety Training Center, it'll be used by the sheriff's office, the fire departments, Day County Mountain Rescue, and the DTF.
So first, we want to explain to you, like our current training center, there's a picture there. It doesn't meet the current NFPA standards for training and associated props, it's a 2019 addition. The reasons it doesn't meet is like the burn container, you have to have a rated fire brick and required panels inside of it. So the container we got now, we've got block around it, which we've had to redo because the blocks got hot and the sand and it's deteriorated. And also, it doesn't meet the required height set before 1402, you're supposed to have a three-story structure, which they do that from the ground to the eve of whatever structure you use, it has to be 32 feet. And we're wanting to do a clean facility, we'll get into that in just a second. Because the sheriff's office, they did use our training center a few times, but the more we burned in it, the more black soot and stuff gets on there. So when they go in there, just rubbing up against the wall, it makes a mess. And also, you know, the property, it has to be at least two acres for us to be on it. So who and how will benefit Day County? First off, it'll benefit the citizens of Day County. It can give the citizens a better insurance rating from the fire departments. And it can also lower the ISO rating citizens get from the fire departments, which could lower their homeowner's insurance rate. So ISO is one to 10, 10 basically not being a fire department, and one is, you know, is the best. You'll have a lot of manpower, a lot more stations than we got, but, so all seven fire departments on ISO. Every station we have, all seven departments are eligible to receive credit for ISO through this facility. The facility hours are approved, you have to have, each volunteer has to have 18 hours of approved training. Right now, the departments are ranging from zero to 3.20 out of 35 points in this section. And not having a certified building, all of our guys to get that 18 hours, they either have to go all the way down to Jipstick to the Fire Academy or to our neighboring counties, Walker County, Catoosa County. And that, you know, volunteers, it's hard to do, to take off a week to go all the way, to be able to get them hours. And we, you know, having a certified building, we could actually host Jipstick classes here, they could come up here and host classes because we actually have a certified place to burn, so maybe our guys could get more hours. So Day County Mountain Rescue, it'll have a tower for rappelling, and a place on top, it'll be a small confined space hole where they can rappel down into, like into a cave, getting somebody out, which can also be used by the fire departments, like if a fireman or somebody's trapped in a basement. There's different techniques we can use to get people out of the basement, so that'll benefit us as well. The sheriff's office, clearing rooms, the building will have movable walls throughout it, so you don't just get, every time you go in, you know what you're going into, the instructors can go in and move the walls, so it's different every time. We didn't put up there also the DTF, it showed interest, Casey York, he's our DTF over here, and we was talking to Major Bradford about it, and he said that would be good for them too, just like you humans, he said they're canines. If they go to the same place to train all the time, they remember the rooms just like people do, so they can change it up and it can help them also. So what are we asking for is two separate buildings. One will be a non-burn container building system, which is a clean facility that we're talking about, and then the open bay system, which will be the burn container. So here's a picture, this will be the clean facility. The tan one is kind of what ours will look like, with a few adjustments, like that top one, we're talking about moving it over above that ventilation to the left, that's a ventilation simulator with plywood right there. So we can do ventilate roof ventilation with a roof and have, it actually got little small holes on each side because that'll have a smoke generator in it, as you see on the right up there, that you can put smoke in. So whenever we're doing roof ventilation, it's got small holes on each side that smoke will start coming out, and it'll show you the wind direction, that way the guys know which way to, which side to ventilate from. Alex, if you don't care, that bottom left picture, that mouth, that tower right there, I put it in there because that's the rappelling tower we're looking at, and it will go on top of that third container right there, and that'll give us an extra 10 feet tall to reach our 32 feet, and also give a rappelling tower for the department. This one doesn't have it, but it'll have a platform coming off of the side of it, so what they call like a negative rappel or a free fall rappel. That way when we're going down in caves and stuff, a lot of times right in the center, when we're going down in caves, you don't have a wall to touch as you're rappelling down, to rappel down, so, or to get down to pick somebody off, you get them away from the wall to learn their ropes and everything. It has a roof simulator, the reconfigurable maze, like I talked about, the confined space opening, that'll be on top of the very third one up under the rappel tower. Sprinkler system will be on the first floor, so we can go in, and if we don't have a way to shut off water, there's a way to cut them sprinklers off using wedges to put in there to stop water flow. We'll have a three-story stand pipe, FDC outside, and each floor will have a hookup where we can go in and practice hooking up hoses, just like our multi-story buildings or Covenant College, West Brow showed great interest in that because of the college, they could actually train flowing water.
The smoke generator system will be in a, an AC ducted into each room. Instead of having to buy three or four different smoking reactors, we'll have one that's in a central location, and we'll be able to control where we push the smoke into which areas. That's one thing we really like about that, not having to buy five different smoke generators.
Yeah, two different ones.
This is the other structure, which we call the, they call it open bay model. This is going to be burn container that's rated for our ISO and NFPA, it's got the 3/16ths of an inch steel insulated, insulation inside, that opening where, on the top right there, that's just showing you the burn room, that's all closed in. It's got a roof hatch for ventilation, when they knock the fire down, you can operate that from the outside to get the heat out. And doors and windows, same as that, and at the bottom, that bottom picture to the right, we see the hose. It's actually a safety hose that goes into the structure, so if something happens, we always have to have a backup with guys in, so it already has a hole inside the structure for the backup firemen. Temperature monitoring system, that way we can watch the heat and not let it get hot, because as we always say, a lot of the firemen, you know, they want it hot going in, but, you know, if you're teaching new people, you're not teaching them anything when it's super hot. You know, most of the time we're going in, it is hot, but most of it's smoke, blackout where you can't see, and that's where most of the training comes in, because you can't see what you're doing, that's the biggest part of training. And as of last year, I think, Chief Sharp at West Brow brought up to the Chiefs Association that every year they wanted the, all the county firemen to attend a fire, live fire inside the county every year to keep their certification and to stay in the fire department, that way we could work together. Right now, we're trying to get ours, we had to tear ours apart, so we're struggling getting that done this year, we're still hoping to, but this will help be able to get that done every year. All right, the fun part, the funding of it. So the two RFPs we sent out, got with Don, and we needed to send it out for the RFPs, so one of them, they were $413,037. The other one is $514,971. So that's the only two proposals we got back, we did send it out for two weeks. So the price of the two buildings, as we said, we did look at, we did do our due diligence and call both companies and call this company and see the price difference, because that was a big price difference, but we did not see anything that was in both of them to make up that difference. So that $413,000 includes the building, delivery, setup, and training on the facility, and that's a two-day training on the facility in the clean burn, the generator and the smoke room showing us how they like you to load the pallets and smoke generator, how to block off different rooms. Two additions, if possible, we would like to add, talking to this company is a sound generation system. This company has did training facilities for New York and some bigger departments and several others. They started out with New York, and I can't remember the other apartment that did this sound generation. And it has been a big, big positive from all the fire departments. It comes programmed with like 20 different sound effects, like fire, chainsaws, people screaming, babies crying, people calling for help, gunshots for the SO when they're going in there, to give it a more realistic going in the fire, you just, it's just not quiet. So that picture to the right is the electronics, it would go into a closet, because we're going to go ahead and do a closet if we ever did want to make it a Class A or Class B burn room, that room's already there. And then there's the controller, and then the bottom is where they locate the speakers. They put a steel around it, waterproof it, so none, the water or anything doesn't affect it. The only other thing we'd like to possibly add is the set of exterior stairs, the ones on the back that go to the second and third floor. That would help with, every year, we, at the first of the year, we do like a PT course that the state requires to get your certification packet, we try to keep that up, so that would help out going up and down the stairs with the hose pack. Also, it would benefit, you know, the sheriff's office having multiple ways in, like they do on maybe apartments and stuff, clearing rooms, plus more exits for us, and better hose advancement going up and downstairs. There is stairs on the inside, but it'll go up to the second floor, and then you may go all the way across and go up to the third floor. So that would be a lot better hose advancement for our guys, and then for PT, of course, some of our guys like to run stairs, so it's good PT for them also. So with that being said, that would bring the cost to $434,037 if we was able to, able to do that. The steps are galvanized, so we don't have to worry about that. So that would be the difference from where we thought we was going to be, and we talked to both of y'all, would be, that brings us in 80,000, pretty much $81,000 cheaper than we've mentioned to y'all whenever we talk, from the highest one, which, talking around and just hearing people talk, that's where we thought we'd be, so the RFPs definitely helped us out on this. So some terms and conditions, this is just what they look at, seven to 10 months, 14 days off-site prep, inspection, visit if desired, so that's just saying if, whenever they get, get it ready before they deliver, if we want to go up and look at it, then we can before they deliver it. The payment terms is 30% on order, 20 on completion, design of drawing, 30% on shipment, and 20% on completion. This one and the other one both had a one-year standard warranty. The parts that we will be in charge of, we couldn't get prices on that, this part, but we plan on doing the majority of this ourself and the help with Mr. Billy Massengill, glad he's here tonight. So the foundation and the dirtwork and stuff, and the footings will be on us. Once we get the design and the approval, they'll send a report on what we're going to have to have. Instead of a whole concrete pad, we're looking at doing piers. It would be six piers for that, one on each corner, and then one in the center where they meet together. And instead of doing concrete all the way around it, since the county's got equipment, we'd like to do asphalt around it, make it a safer area around, plus it's easier setting it up and then having asphalt, it'll be easier to wash out from up under the building.
Especially your burn building, where you, after you burn, you have all the ash going through. With it setting up and it being on asphalt, we just take a hose and clean it, that way you don't, it's not, doesn't keep building up under there. So you wash it out, clean it.
And then the schedule estimated activity there at the bottom, eight weeks for the design and drawing, fabrication 18 weeks, assembly two weeks, onsite three weeks, two days of training. So you're looking at 30 weeks to two days around that timeframe for being turn, lock, key, and ready to train in. So where we'd like the money to come from is the ARPA, I guess I left out of A, that's my fault. So it comes to, with all nine departments, and that's counting the seven fire departments, Mountain Rescue, Sheriff's Office, I mean, it could be 10 if you do separate on the DTF. Just basically comes out to $48,227 per department. We do know the fire departments, they're needing the majority of their splosh for other needs. I think Chief can correct me, probably about three or maybe four departments is needing trucks. And I guess you can imagine what they are, the way the regular cars just went up, so. We feel this would be the best way to help everyone out, and I'm sure the sheriff's office, they're, you know, they're in the same boat with cars and more stuff, more stuff that they need, so we feel that this would be the best way to help us out. So just like I said, we appreciate this opportunity to present this to you, it's a great benefit to our public safety teams. One of the biggest benefits has been the credit for ISO for all the fire departments. Of course, each department struggles in this area of the grading system. Also, the state of Georgia makes it harder for our volunteers and adds more training requirements each year on us, so. It seems like, you know, just like everything else, it seems like sometimes we're trying to just kind of weed out the volunteers a little bit, we're doing our best to keep them up and keep the training here, so it, so it doesn't do that. We understand it's a large purchase, but this will benefit us, 15, 20-plus years, I mean, it's going to benefit us for a long time because we're definitely going to take care of it. I think when we talked to Ms. Bradford, she talked about, you know, rules and stuff for the facility. That's something that there will be, we, you know, the Chiefs Association will get with the sheriff's office. We've talked about making a, like a Google calendar, you know, if you want to go train in it, you know, we know who's there, and if we go the next day and it's messed up or not cleaned, then we know who's responsible. And there will be rules and setup for this. The only thing where departments just can't go in, well, the rules will be strict, is the live burn container. You have to have a live fire instructor to actually burn in it, and we do have three or four at our department. I think it's four, and some of the other departments, I think they're trying to work on getting theirs, I know maybe South A, Matt's trying to work on getting his. But that's one thing the state requires, if, you know, you just let them go burn in, they come up, you know, they're going to get on us and then they're coming to y'all, you know, it just goes up the chain, so. There will be rules that, that's what Ms. Bradford was worried about. And just like, the big thing is ISO, that's 35 points of our grade, and most departments are getting zero. The only, the only reason some get any points is because they've got full-time personnel at another department, pretty much, and you can count them ISO ratings, half of them towards the volunteer department. So if none of the fire departments had any full-time jobs somewhere, and they were just all volunteered, didn't have a career fire job, pretty much all seven departments would have zero. So that 35% could, could basically pretty much bring people down a point, because that's a, that's a lot we're missing out on, and that's one of the things we, you know, we look at our ISO, and the other departments do too, and we try to do what we can. And this is one part that we know we could do better in if we had a facility. Some things we can't help, and, but this is one thing we'd like to, so.
And then it all depends, it depends on your department's degree, you know, they have to participate.
That's right.
I mean, this is, they've got to participate to get these points.
But like, we talked- We've got ISO ratings, you know, and we have issues in some of the departments right now, wouldn't because training, but mainly manpower and actually just, you know, I mean, everybody's got, I mean, everybody's got issues with that, but.
But it's opened up to, it'll be opened up to everybody, all the trainings always, when we have them now, we open, the majority of the time, we open it up to everybody, so.
Go around the table, Mr. Heartline, you got questions there now?
So which department will actually be over it?
It'd be the Chiefs Association, it'll be Chief's Association and the Sheriff's Office, I mean, we'll all, it's benefiting us all, so we'll get a person from, like if, I think Haley was the training officer at the sheriff's office, Tommy wants to put her over it, and then DTF, Casey could be over his portion, and we'll have like a committee or group that will sit down and meet and figure out the best thing to do, and Rodney and Chief Kaiser are the coordinators of the Chiefs Association, they can sit on it, and just pretty much everybody, and they could pick somebody, whoever's over training to be over it.
What about, as far as it's classified and it's coming under, it's coming under training, correct?
Yes, sir.
So how are y'all coming up with 35 points? Well, this here is the ISO ratings, and it's nine points.
The training, the training facility, if you look, nine point, what do you got there, should I, can I, see if I can explain it?
So you got, fire departments count for 50% of the total classification of ISOs, then you drop down here to training, and it just shows nine points.
Nine points, it goes by points, but that's 35, 35%, they do it by percentages also.
Yeah, it's hard, it's-
I do, I could look at it.
Hard to figure out how they do it, but they do it by percentages instead of, you know, you don't get just 35 points, you get them with nine points if you meet all that. You gotta have 35 points to get them full, nine points to train, plus everything else, there's certain sections in training. I mean, it's like we got, what did we get?
We got 0.32% out of it, not even a point out of it.
And then what's your expected cost on the paving and the footers, and, I mean, you got, do you got to pour footers under, the pad under?
No, that's just, that's just like we mentioned, the, we have to wait till it comes back, it'll just be like four-by-four, six-by-six piers, and there'll be six of them. So, can you pull the picture back up?
They'll, they have, they'll sit on those piers, which keeps them up off the ground, that keeps, you can keep stuff out from under them.
And you'll asphalt under.
Well, if, if-
So like the both corners right there, and then the center where them containers meet will be a pier, so it'll be six, four-by-four, six, whatever they recommend. So it'll be piers instead of a whole pad to hopefully make that cheaper. We was thinking asphalt because we figured if, you know, we've got the equipment and we could do, help do most of the work, it'd probably be cheaper than doing a whole concrete pad.
But that wouldn't have to be necessarily-
Yeah, and that cannot be designed until we get a drawing and figure out what we need.
And their engineers will design it and draw it, and they've got certified welders that'll come in and do the welding and stuff. We've got a whole packet on everything, everybody that's certified that comes in and does the work.
And I've got our packet, Mr. Heartline, and I can show you one day the breakdown where it shows that 35 points, you understand, but it does show 35 points.
Mr. Lowry, you got any questions on?
Do we have that much in ARPA guns?
We have about 900 and, I mean, I'm around 980,000 available. But, it's a lot of money. I've asked him about grants, but, you know, that would be competitive grant, of course, ARPA is a grant, but ARPA has special rules tied to it that you can use other grants with that, even though it's federal money. But there's no grants that we've heard or-
No, and it's harder being volunteer department with few people. They look at that kind of money of like Atlanta and big career jobs, it's got a lot of personnel.
When we were working on our radios and our grants we got before, but Alex, with, a lot of your big departments, New York, places like that, they get $4 million, and the little departments, you might get $25,000 or $30,000, but that's just, all the big departments got all the money and the little departments didn't, so that tells you who's, you know, got to pull, where they get it.
Well, my, my only concern was definitely how it would be ran and who would be there to make sure that it's being properly taken care of, and we discussed all that. So, and I would be happy to have the chiefs, you know, definitely over it and looking, making sure.
Yeah, we'll, I mean, we'll, there'll always be somebody there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and then, you know, I went over to your facility, and, you know, it's clear, everything is, looks really good and is in good shape, so I appreciate it, you know, it looked like you guys were ready to go anytime, so.
And being this night, having a committee, like Mr. Heartline said, we'll have one from each one, and it'll hold them responsible.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a good plan, so, and plus it would include them to want to-
And it gives us a good working relationship, just being on a committee like that, them getting together and working together.
It might eventually work into all of you being one.
Yeah.
That's possible.
Got to start somewhere.
Yeah.
Well, the Chiefs Association's been a big step, it's really been working good.
Yeah, and we, Chief, he's assistant coordinator now, he brought it up two months ago, and asked if everybody was okay with it, any dislikes or anybody not go for it, because we're presenting it as everybody, it's not just New Salem, Trenton, it's everybody's, and we got good, I mean, people asked questions about it, nobody said no, so.
So is there any portion of this money you figuring, you figuring all of it coming out, are they going to dedicate some of their splosh money to it?
We'd like for the building to be the ARPA.
Yeah.
And then if we have to, when we get the drawings back and the foundation, we could see how the departments fill in price and split that up between our splosh and get that done.
And we got a lot of people, I mean, you know, too.
We plan on doing it, most of it ourselves.
Yeah, and then the maintenance of it, would that be picked up by just regular splosh or regular?
Well, there's really, there's not going to be a whole lot of maintenance, that's one reason we want the stairwell to be galvanized, so there's no painting. The, they use a high-grade marine paint on it.
It'd be water, water and-
Yeah, and it's all, every floor's got floor drains in it, where it'll go all the way down to the surface. Mostly the maintenance on it will be cleaned up from training and stuff, the way it's built, because it's all, the walls, the movable doors, it's all metal, so there's really, and that being a clean facility, that's pretty much-
If it is like being here, it'd be clean.
Right.
Only one would be, different would be the burn building, it could be-
And then we would wa, we would wash it out every time after a burn.
Yeah, I understand that, okay.
Robert, you want to comment on it, I mean, and I'm not, you know, we're not going to, this is kind of early in the game to get everybody to say yes tonight, we're going to do this, I mean, because it's a lot of money, you know, and I know we'd like to make a decision, and y'all would like for us to, but when they looked at the money too, and, you know, Sheriff's alright, we're taking his money out of this, I mean, his share or his part, like at $48,000, he's already fine with that, using it and not putting it in their training facility, that, the things that they need over there now. So he's saying that he would find with putting, I know he's gonna be using it or they are, but y'all talk to them.
We talked to Major Bradford and they said it was a big thing, I mean, I don't think he really ever mentioned, he never really mentioned anything about that. They were on the same page of it really benefiting them also.
And,
Nothing like that was really ever.
And plus, you know, we got, we got a lot of going on, you know, with that, with the election bill now, we gotta, you know, we don't know how much this we're gonna be able to use and that, it's going, what's gonna help us, so. And we just need to really look at it, I mean, it's, it's almost half a million dollars, time you figure, you know, and it's needed. I'm not gonna say, I'm not saying I'm, I'm sure not saying I'm against it, but we, we need to really look at everything, you know, that we got and where the money is coming from, you know. Robert, go ahead, I'm sorry, I don't wanna interrupt you or not, but we.
Now, you did, I think you said that the other, some of the surrounding counties that are having to go to Forsyth would be able to train in this as well?
Yes, yeah.
Sheriff's departments and?
Yeah, I'm sure, I don't, I'm not sure, I can't speak.
I mean, whether they want to or not, I don't.
Well, I can't speak on the sheriff's department, I think they can do, they may can do a lot of their stuff in-house. I know they have to go down a gypstick, but I'm not sure how their facility stuff works out, but I do know fire without a training facility like Catus and Walker, they've got certified buildings, so they can host a lot of classes and stuff up here and not go down a gypstick. And we'd be able to do the same thing and help out our volunteers and, cause a lot of them can't get off for a week or three days. And if we can do a class here on the weekend, you know, you actually get a state certification would help out.
Now, is eighteen hours you first talked about, is that one, once in a lifetime of the career or is that annual?
Every year, yeah.
The volunteers are hard to get now and it's really hard to get a volunteer when you tell him he's gotta be gone for two weeks. And he's not getting paid, and you know, so they just can't do it.
And ISO, that's, that's just facility training, there's still like a hundred ninety-two company hour trainings, like sixteen hours of officers training. There's more hours on top of that you've gotta get to.
Any other comment?
One thing I'd like for y'all to think about, and I know we, we're set on money here on this twenty fifteen splosh, twenty fifteen. There's still sixty-four thousand in that and of course, most of it, some of them very small amounts. One fire department has nearly half of it and I think they're gonna need that for a car and I understand that. But some, at some point, we need to look at something to clean this money out of here, I mean, twenty fifteen is, it's setting. If that number is,
I think ours is.
If that number's current and accurate.
I think we cleaned ours up.
Yeah.
And we, and we're also with the chief's association, I've mentioned that. It's about every month when we meet, we mention you need to get your splosh straightened out. I mean, I can't.
But I mean, are they willing to put that into this? I mean, is it, you know, is, I, it is, I know with it, you know, y'all, we're city and county, you know, but is the city gonna have any, any bite in it too? I mean, are they gonna participate in either?
Yes, they will have to go with them for and go after, I mean, I can't.
Yeah, I know you can't speak for that, but I mean, has that been mentioned? I know Alex is the mayor and all, but.
I mean, it's been mentioned a little bit.
It's a big deal, this is a big.
Like on some of the other stuff, uh, that we're looking about doing, maybe them kicking in, but it just, it just depends on how they feel with it being out in the county where it is and spending it and I'm not sure how that would work out, so that's just something.
Cause you know, city pays, city pays county, I mean, you pay county taxes and city taxes, so you, you know.
Well, there would just be, you know, enough here when you look, you take out the one, got the most of it, take that out. Still almost enough for the two add-ons you were looking at. That has been sitting here again since twenty fifteen in the old splosh that Don reports on every, every month. And it'd just be something for y'all to think about too and talk to the other fire departments, you can get a copy of this if you don't have it, what each one of them has. I know that, I think it was maybe New Salem or Westboro talking about needing a tanker truck or.
Yeah, there's several, New Salem, I think Westboro too, and I think South A.
Yeah, they won't even bring them off the mountain there.
And if it's needed for that, then, then I understand that, but you know.
And I think that's what they were worried about, if it's the department I'm thinking about.
Well, appreciate you, you know, I mean, that's just, that's a good presentation and now we know a number, at least we know a real number and then we can, you know, and I think we, we can definitely make the decision, we got our September meeting coming up after and we can get serious about this and say, give you an answer. You know, cause you said they'll hold the price till December, by December.
I think it's what it says, go through, on the terms, I think it said December thirty-first or thirtieth.
Any more questions? All right, appreciate y'all. All right, uh, Mr. Jamie Blevins, move down number seven, this is, Jamie's, wanna give us a report on a courthouse?
Corporal?
Historical courthouse?
All right, so this month we had, um, one RFP off our landscaping, we got three responses back on that. Um, all three responses had their bid behind, so, um, they're all valid bids. One was from a company called Afix, uh, which I think used to be mountaintop landscaping off Signal Mountain. Earthscapes, which is, um, just north of Dade County right at the state line, they bought Quality Fences' old shop there and then Udaan Nursery. So, um, Afix was a little bidder, we scoped everybody out. Based on everything we've seen, there's no reason not to award it to Afix being the little bidder, so they were at sixty-eight, five seventy-nine, uh, which was about ten thousand dollars lower than the next bid, uh, and an overall fourteen thousand dollars savings on our budget. So, um, the contingency on the project would increase, uh, by the fourteen thousand if you guys wanna go with Afix, which is always good news, right? So, um, from a scheduling standpoint, framing and drawwork is ongoing, we got essentially all the framing done. We've got, uh, an electrical rough end meeting in the morning, there's some conflicts on getting some of the rough end in through the crawl space under some of the rooms, there's not really access, so we've gotta figure out how to chase some cables back through there to get to the walls.
Solid walls on the, yeah.
Yeah, so you've got crawl space through the middle and then all the offices kinda come down, so, we're looking at options on that, uh, short of cutting access holes in the floor, we're trying to avoid that, you know, so that's the purpose of that meeting. Once we get that sorted out, they'll get that knocked out and then we'll be able to proceed, uh, with hanging the drywall, which will kinda be our next big milestone step to, to get the thing buttoned up. So the millwork's been released based on our, um, presentation a couple of months ago, they're in the process of getting shop drawings and samples done, uh, for review and approval. You know, like we discussed, that's the longest lead time and the biggest piece of the project, so, um, it was good to get them going and we'll probably still, I would say eight to ten weeks before we see that stuff hit the job. But it is progressing, we have got the, uh, cementile samples in for, uh, production that we got out of the courtroom. Uh, we don't have a date on those yet, uh, and the exterior drain work that's been released, um, we'll get started on that uh, as soon as a crew becomes available to jump on that. So, um, our plan over the next month will be to get, uh, stamped concrete sidewalks. So we had those budgeted for new sidewalks from, uh, the stairs by the street to the actual stairs of the courthouse. So we do sidewalks in that area. And then we'll also get, uh, bids on repairing that retaining wall where the car hit it in addition to the section we've gotta take out to get the drain line put in. Uh, so that's where we're tracking right now, I've attached a updated budget that has the Afix bid included. So you can compare that with the previous month's reports if you wanna see how the budget's tracking. So, any questions?
So the outside drain, it was coming through the wall, you'll, you'll, you'll have that completed when you say, I mean, as far as.
You know, it's, it's won't take long to do, it's probably a week, we can have where the work, once we actually get in there and get started, so I'm hoping by September, we've got that wrapped up.
Before winter, before we get by.
Absolutely.
Yes, cause it's, everything outside, need to really concentrate on it, you know.
Yeah, cause the plan would be to get that wrapped up, uh, and then get going on this landscape work in the fall so that the plants come in dormant and we don't have to worry about watering them till they come back in the spring.
Yeah, okay. Any questions? Okay, appreciate you.
All right, thanks guys, see you next month.
All right, let's move down to, uh, number eight, this is, um, on our twenty, twenty-three millage rate. Now, this is discussing the public hearings that, um, are just set the dates and for this consideration of our final approval of millage rate, so Don, you wanna go over that and then?
In your packet you have, and, and this is also online, um, the proposed millage rate for two thousand twenty-three. And, um, we've looked at, but to fund the budget at the current level, uh, that it was proposed at, which was, let me look, fourteen, oh, there it is. Uh, fourteen million, five hundred, fourteen million, five hundred thousand dollars. That is what this is proposed at doing, it's that, plus we, we also, when we budgeted, we did use two hundred thousand in our fund balance. If you recall at the bottom of that list, unreserved fund balance. So the, leaving the millage rate at eight percent, or eight mils, I keep saying percent, eight mils, would actually fund the budget one hundred percent. And, uh, actually, when you, the way, when you calculate this using the state's forms, the, uh, calculation for the incorporated area of Dade County, which is the city, uh, and it's not city millage rate now, just think of it city as far as incorporated land, uh, and whatever. So that, uh, structures, I should say, personal and real property, uh, that actually would drop to ten point two one nine. It's currently ten point five five four, so that would be a decrease in the millage rate for that area of zero point three three four. But when you calculate the millage rate, you have to use the state's forms, which if anybody's interested, that's called PT thirty-two dot one. And it's the computation of the millage rate rollback and percentage increase in property taxes. Because the county is collecting more than we did the prior year, that is considered a tax increase by the state of Georgia. And so the state looks at that and what was in the paper is the notice of property tax increase. It says it's eight point seven three percent in the unincorporated area, six point nine five percent in the incorporated area. And, um, that is, um, seven, they, they take it, they, they say, what we have to advertise is the rollback rate and that we're gonna increase back to the, back to our proposed millage rate of eight mils. This has happened many years in the past, it's happened specifically this exact way for the last three years where, uh, we did maintain eight mils in the unincorporated area. And, uh, for the most part, uh, most part, not all, not everybody, a lot of people went down a little bit last year and a little bit the prior year. This was a, they did the reevaluation this year, had a lot of increase and there was quite a bit of growth in the digest. Uh, and again, if you looked on the, um, five-year history, it's on there, and also the five-year history that's in the paper, it's also online, uh, that we have to advertise. You'll see that it's up, you know, a significant amount, let me get this one here. About fourteen million on the, uh, incorporated area, uh, the part, the, uh, personal property, that's for real property. Personal property did go down around five point four million. And, uh, then in the unincorporated area, real property went up, let's see, it went from five fifty to six forty-one, six hundred forty-one million. And then personal property, it went from twenty-four million to thirty million, that's a six point one million dollar increase. So because of those increases, you know, that's what we call growth in the digest. That has, that would allow the county to collect additional funds and that's what we have proposed, uh, to do in order to, uh, to, uh, fund about the budget, the FY twenty-four budget. This is considered the, uh, the two thousand twenty-three millage rate, it's a little confusing, cause we're actually pay for our, technically, last year's budget with this year's money. It never makes sense to me, but that's the way the state looks at it, but anyway. Uh, so the money that's coming in now is really gonna be the money that's funding, we, we fund next year's budget with it, but they classify that as the prior year's budget. But anyway, um, I could go on for.
I know, but it's pretty much, you know, you, you know, we, the millage rate, we're, we're not raising the millage rate, we're keep, leave, keep, leaving the millage rate at eight percent, which that's, you know, and, um, we did, um, you know, and, and after looking at, I know you've looked at it, I've looked at it a lot and done a lot of numbers and, and the majority of people in the county, their taxes, uh, what you write at the end of the year, your check is, it, it is gonna stay the same or go down, you're gonna have people that's added on to their property, you know, built to swim, put whatever, you know, they're gonna, they'll have a bigger check to write, but, you know, and that's been the last two or three years, I mean, we've actually, and we've had to advertise that we had a tax increase, you know, because we've collected, we've had growth. So, um, you know, and, and we're still looking at ways to cut, you know, till the final meeting, you know, as far as the millage rate. We're trying to go at different departments to look if we can actually cut down and maybe go down a little bit on the millage rate, but it's not gonna change a whole lot, even if it went down, you know, it's, um, you know, we, and I'm glad of the growth, I, I like, I mean, you know, I mean, it's just what we, you know, I don't wanna get away out of, out of kilter on it, but I mean, you know, we can't control, we don't control that. We can't control the value of property, you know, what an acre's worth, but, uh, so, you got any comments, Philip?
I'll go around town. Yeah, I would. I've come in and talked yesterday and I've looked at the numbers, what I would like to see is we went up eight point seven three percent. That's, that's the tax increase because of the growth, inflation's running, what, eight, seven, eight percent? Me personally, I would like to split the difference and gum, I would like to get the millage rate to a seven point seven five percent and we just need to make the cuts where we need to make.
You mean seven five, seven point five percent?
Seven point seven five mil. Not percent, not percent mil, that's, that's five percent increase, that's us backing off three percent.
Or quarter of a mil.
Yeah, three point one percent, you know, when inflation goes up and it gets tight at home, we, you cut back and you spend less and I think that's what we need to do here. That's just my personal opinion, everybody's made style right now.
I wanna just clarify, you said eight point seven three percent, but that's based off the rollback rate, is that what you meant?
Yes, rollback rate is at seven point three five to collect what we collected last year.
Cause we're not at this, we are not currently at seven point three five.
I know that.
Okay, just making sure.
And it's something, you know, we, you know, we can try, we can do, we can't, we can't just.
I think we need to ask.
Yeah, we can, we gotta ask and we can handle, I mean, for, but we got, it'll be a county, you know, joint thing, so then that's what I say, it's not over, it's over. And I don't, I don't wanna, and I know what you're saying to me, I don't wanna give everybody's hopes that we're going, we're doing everything we can now that we see, you know, we, we're at eight mils, that we can do to actually bring it on down and I'm not making any promises, you know, of, of what we, what's gonna happen, but I agree with you.
And there's not a lot left, if you look at our budget, that's, when you come down from personnel to the payroll taxes, insurance, business, building insurance, we can't adjust that unless we shop out and maybe find something cheaper, but after that, there's not a whole lot to try to squeeze it out of. And I understand that, but we just really need to look.
Yeah, and we are, we, we need to, Mr. Lowry, what you got?
And how many dollars, and you have that in dollars, how much that would actually be?
Having Walmart, I didn't hear you.
Just wondering if you had the numbers on the actual dollar amount that would be cut. I mean, everything we look at, our food for prisoners, just like everybody else on our.
Gas, land, fuel, everything's going across.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's like putting, you know, putting this.
And some things we can't control, uh, when the governor says, okay, you're gonna have three elections and you're gonna have to have this many people working the polls and there was an increase in that cost this year.
Yeah.
Our insurance.
And we're the ones paying for it, they don't, he might order us to do that, but they don't help us.
No, they don't help us pay for all that. So I'm, I'm, I agree with Philip, we need to cut where we can, but we need to be, we need to be plain where that money's coming from, cause everybody wants to cut the budget until it's something that comes out of, something that they're enjoying.
Yeah, it would be nice to know what that number would be, because then, then you're looking at.
We're only collecting five hundred and twenty-two thousand more proposed than we did last year. Last year was four point four three million and this is four point nine five million. So it's five hundred and twenty-two thousand, which half of that would. So it's five hundred and twenty-two thousand, which half of that would be about two sixty, two fifty.
And me and, and Philip, we both report on all the new homes and nine-one-one addresses we got. Well, that is growth. I mean, it's, that's more services that we're providing and I'm, I'm certainly not for tax increases, but if we're going to say that we're going to more to cut, I want, I'd just like to be okay, put it out front. This is who we're looking at and that's where it's going to come from.
And you mentioned elections and this budget does contain next year's elections. So, I mean, through June, June thirty, and we'll have at least one for sure, maybe two, if we ever run off. There will be two, most likely for sure.
Animal shelter and those.
Well, we didn't, we don't have an animal shelter, so we're waiting to see, you know, but it would not, no, it does not.
Yeah, so.
Well, it would not come on, I mean, even before you start, that, that's not going to come on to the following year's budget. There's no way that we, we got this election thing to worry about right over here right now to get that thing. We'll, we'll get that, but as far as getting into that, we'll actually manage, we'll come under the, yeah, yeah. What about, you got any more comment, Mr. Bradford?
Well, I, I mean, I just, I agree with Lamar. You know, I, I've been in different departments. I go in those meetings and I look at the numbers and I, it, to me, it would be, you'd be cutting a completely a department. And I just don't, you know, I just don't see how that that's, I just don't see how that's possible, but.
Well, we can try, we can go to each, you know, go to, I'll talk to Sarah and just see if there's anything, if they can actually, let them know where we're at and, and, and what do you recommend? And what do you say? That's her job to try, but it's going to be hard, you know, it is. I mean, without cutting services, you know. Mr. Golf, you got any?
Well, I, I mean, I think it bears looking at, Don can do some numbers of what it, like Lamar's asking, what it would be at seven point seven five or seven point eight oh, something, whatever. When we look at, and then Lamar brings up a good point of every month you report on, now, every, every permit is not for a new house. But there have been a lot of new houses go up and those people are part of that overall growth. And then people who have added on and some people's taxes went down. I mean, it's really a, it's skewed by something all the way around. If you have forty new homes go up, then everything up here on top line and real and personal property goes up. And then, but you'll have some peoples through depreciation and through exemptions or whatever that goes down. But no, I think if Don can look at it and see what, what it will actually do at seven point seven five, seven point eight five, something in there, then, but at least we're saying we're leaving it at what it was.
I know, that's a good thing.
An increase.
Because I've been here and you have Don too, and sat here with a blank look on our face with seven, eight hundred thousand dollar shortage. I mean, we wonder, you know, how in the world, you know, you go back and so it's, it's, it's a, but we, we'll do it all we know, you know, we just, you know.
And also, when you, if you decrease the milit rate and then we have a, and I want people to start thinking of this. I want them to really listen. When that animal shelter goes online, that's going to be some expense. Because there's more people involved, there's veterinarians and the whole ball of wax. Then you got to put it back on. It looks great to take off today, but if you have to put that right back on in a year or two years, then well, y'all are killing us. So it's, you know, you got to look at.
Well, I mean, that's just like the trainee said, they just ask for money. It's great that we're going to get that out of work to pay for it, but then you got a twenty to forty thousand maintenance to pay, spend on that building, so your budget just went up another twenty or forty thousand dollars.
Right.
That's, I just, that's the hard part.
Okay, anything you want to add? What about you, attorney? You got anything to add to this?
I don't know.
You're awful quiet. All right, so you've got, this is posted now, we've already got our, our dates posted on our website.
First and third, first and second public hearing will be next Thursday. And then the final third public hearing will be on August the seventeenth at five P M. And then the special call meeting at five thirty that evening to consider.
Will the school board be ready? You think they'll have their?
They will be ready the following Monday or Tuesday.
Say that again, I'm so sorry.
I'll get it to you.
Okay.
Okay, all right, let's move down to the number nine. This has been on the agenda for three meetings, whatever. Months, you know, and we, and on Mr. Hartline, I talked about it a couple of times and all, but Dan Robin was in there this morning. And, you know, y'all, I'll, I'll just go around and get some opinions. I know my opinion right now, you know, we, there's too much unknown right now to really, you know. But Mr. Hartline, I'll start with you, what has come around?
My question is, if none of the five commissioners sponsored this resolution, I would just prefer to have it removed from the agenda altogether.
Okay, Mr. Larry, your opinion on?
I, I went and spoke with Robin about this and my concern is that's following the constitution of the state of Georgia and separation of church and state, which is a good thing. Our forefathers were religious leaders and they, they put that in there so we would all have our own personal freedoms with religion. And if we're going to do this, we need to be sure that we're following the letter of the law. I mean, I, my question to Robin was, how are we lit, how are we working with Memorial, for instance?
You mean Memorial Hospital?
Yeah, Memorial Hospital, they're a religious organization. But they signed agreements and to how that money can be used. So I just, I just think we need to be careful that we don't do something that we took in oath that we, we would not do. And those are, those are just my, my concern is if we're going to do it, we need to be sure that we're doing it to the letter of the law.
Mr. Bradford, your opinion?
Well, I agree with Lamar on that. It looks like that we are, from the information that we got from the, we're at ACCG, is that correct?
Yes, so I've, I've had, she and I have not spoken personally, but we have sent emails. And she, it didn't get immediate, the purpose of the, of the agreement was an appropriate person. Appropriate purpose, meaning that, you know, the treatment is part of the remediation aspect that the thing requires. And so that, that was her, she did not go to the underlying facts of the agreement itself. She felt the purpose of the agreement was appropriate.
Okay, well, with that, my only, I guess, about, my only, I guess, negative about it, it would, would be that it would be like a certain amount. And it wouldn't be over a certain amount. And it would be maybe some, like, we've been talking about this for months, months. And nobody has come forward, another group like this has never come forward so far that I'm aware of.
That's why we got to be careful because we're going to set a presence when we do this, you know. And, you know, like you said, we need an amount, but once we do this, you know, that's, that's going to give, that'd be setting a presence. So we will have, I'm sure, I know two populars going to come.
We need to get one, we need to get one letter from, letter from some.
We got an email, yeah, some, they're, they're beginning to come in. You know, it's a four county, it's not somebody here, but it's somebody that Dave Walker, Catusa and.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's a little different though, but.
It's different, but it's essentially doing some, if they meet that criteria. That's our problem is finding out for sure. We're dealing with one, we're talking about one place every month.
Yeah.
And trying to find out whether or not it's a separation of church and state because they are built up of religious leaders. But I'm going to tell you, you know, we talked about it, but, you know, earlier, I'm going to be leaving here. This is going to go on for the next fifteen years. This is, this is, some of these farm, big pharma companies have not even agreed to pay it yet. And they're saying, we're, the ones that have, we're going to pay one point six billion, but it's going to be over thirteen years. This money's going to come in and I don't want us to look at it, first of all, like it's tax money that we're taking from anybody because it's not. It's money we didn't ask for, it's money that's probably good that it's there because the big pharma is deceived and doctors prescribed till they got people hooked on this stuff and now we're having to pay for it. But it's going to go on for my lifetime at the rate it's going. And we can't do this every time somebody comes if we're going to, we can say no, but they're going to keep coming and we can't, you know, we just can't. We've got to look at it like, we, we need to start doing this, just like I did the, said the twenty fifteen plot. You're setting on money that's been there now for eight years, you know, since the time it was taken in over that period of time. AARP, I'm glad to see that we're looking for ways to get it because it don't need to sit there forever. It needs to be a benefit. And if this can benefit somebody, then that's what we need to look at. But we can't look at it like this is the only thing we're ever going to do because that's only, we do need to look at an amount and that would be a portion of what come in.
Right.
And we did get more, I think you said, a little bit more this, this week. Because it's coming in three thousand, four thousand, five thousand at a time. It may come in a hundred thousand at a time next time. We don't know. We're only getting little bits of it, as Jerry Kaiser said about the fire departments, the big ones, you know, cities like Philadelphia got hundreds of millions of dollars and, you know, but they've got hundreds, thousands of more people than we've got. But we've got to start looking at what we're going to do with it and we can't do this every time we have something come up.
Well, and I, we can't spend the time every month talking about the same thing. The money that is given to us to give out to, so it needs to be either some type of a little grant that's broke for these types of people or, you know, a certain little amount or even that we give it, they tell us who needs it and, and they give it directly to the person.
Well, I agree one hundred percent with Philip, first of all. We're, on this issue we're dealing with, whether or not it's church and state, we have not have, had a definitive answer. But we need to word it some way that this comes off of our agenda because as long as we keep tabling it, it's got to be here next month.
I know, that's why.
Well, what we can do is just go ahead and agree or disagree, just pull it off the agenda until further, until further notice, until we get, call it a game plan or an agenda, whatever, of bylaws or guidelines that they, that, that, when this, that we can go by. And, and, and then put it on there and we'll have something to agree on or disagree on. Right now, you know, just spinning a wheel.
What, at this point, could you say what would be that criteria?
So as far as the church and state issue or, or in general?
I think there's table, table in this, we.
Yeah, yeah, so we could table, let me also say that one thing that Michelle Martin, I think, had, had mentioned, I think to all of us, is that the governor is putting together a, a board, which is supposed to report back in November about the uses of, of this money, so.
Their recommendation.
Yeah, their recommendations about that. Because the underlying, the court orders are vague at best. I mean, since you, everyone's kind of left in the dark right now. And so that would not be a, if, if we can assume that they will give it as reported in November, like they're supposed to, that would not be a bad.
Time to, yeah, timeframe.
Bad thing to do.
Yeah, okay.
All right, everybody agree, agree with?
I just want to make one more statement. We look at the church and state thing, at least faith-based organizations are doing things. Whereas a lot of other, we, you know, we're, we're not, we're, we don't have a place for these people to go. But if, if it can be done, we need to look at it that way too, that faith-based, whether it's panned up or some of the churches, they're doing it. And if it's just not in complete conflict with the constitution of the United States and what it was worded for, then we need to, we need to start looking at places to use this money to help people. Because it's helping nobody sitting in the bank.
No, it's not.
Okay.
So are we discussing tabling this resolution or what are we discussing doing?
No, we're discussing removing it from this agenda until we have something, until the governor.
Yeah, it won't be back on next month.
It will not be back next, but it'll be, and then when we have some guidance, we don't have to go by his guidance, but if we have some, some opinion from the state, the highest, the governors, and we can look at it and we can add or take away, and then we'll come up with something here to lay on table and say, look, this is what it is. It's money, you know, and, and we'll have something to go by, you know, and.
Yeah, because that was, that was another concern is we gave this money out and later they come back and say, oh, you can't use it for that.
That's what we don't.
We don't, yeah, then we're going to have to try to dig that money up.
No, if they do that, I'll tell them as Lamar, as I did.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, but.
Robert, because he's.
So everybody okay with that? I'm not, not, okay, we'll just put that on, what we put it on consent, as soon as you know, whatever you want to do. I mean, well, that's, we're all in agreement to go ahead and, and take this off till further notice. Okay, let's move down to number ten. This is ordinance zero eight, zero three, Z dash twenty-three. This is amendment to hotel motel accommodations excise tax passed July the fifth of two thousand eighteen. Don, I'll let you go in.
The ordinance was proposed last month, which is ordinance number zero eight dash zero three dash twenty-three, an amendment to the hotel motel accommodations excise tax passed back in July fifth, two thousand eighteen. And basically what that's doing, this is the second reading and would be the final reading tonight if approved. But it, it allows for us to collect it in our office. We've been collecting it in our office, day one, but tax commissioners listed as collecting it. Robin had written that in the original ordinance because the tax commissioner does have special powers granted under the state of Georgia. I, I guess basically for five phases and different things.
That's right.
But we're, I don't even know that we'd ever go to that extent anyway for hotel motel. Anyway, the bottom line is we're doing the collection and the paperwork in our office. So we're trying to clean that ordinance up to just match that.
Okay.
I want to add to that. And this was, because I've had some questions. This only came about, about two years ago, two and a half.
Two thousand eighteen?
Eighteen.
Yeah, so, and we did not know which way it was going to go or how it was going to be collected, correct?
Right, well, it was a lot of unknowns about it at the time because we really never had done it before. And then the, then there was a new tax commissioner elected and it's not that Jane didn't want to do it, it's just.
Yeah, it just.
Most county, we found out later that most counties, in fact, I'd say ninety-plus percent of counties, maybe all, I'm not, I don't know, collect from their office. It's an excise tax and typically tax commissioners don't collect excise taxes. They, they go straight to the, well, the governing authority of a county, which is the board of commissioners. And so that's what this, that's the same thing here.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I've had some questions, so.
Any questions, Lamar, or Mr. Hartline, about it?
No, because we didn't, we just started collecting that tax in two thousand eighteen, right?
Uh, we didn't, because we didn't, it was really.
Later.
Really, actually, they're like twenty-one.
Twenty-four, twenty-two.
Because see, as a result of twenty twenty COVID.
Airbnbs.
Airbnbs really were kind of, before, but after that, they just exploded.
Well, it became, it became a state law.
Came on state law later.
State law, and then, then it, after it became a state law, it kind of hit us.
Yeah.
Not hit us, but counties.
They sent it to, to county.
Yes.
Yep. Airbnb, the RBO, Travelocity, there's a whole list of them. They, they remit it directly, just through the state law, remit it directly, collect it. And then they, that agency, Airbnb or whoever, just sends it directly to the county.
Any comment, Mr. Golf, or anyone, I remember, put that on consent agenda then. Anybody else, anything else they want to say or?
I just got a statement I need to make, if that's okay.
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, when we were talking last month about the transfer station, the recycle, I made the statement that Billy Massengill had failed to give me the proper numbers that, that was costing or receiving or whatever, however you want to put it. But Billy asked me about a week after that, he said, don't you remember us sitting over, we was over at my little farm, we was sitting on the old bucket. And we were talking about it and Billy did tell me that what the cost was. I don't, I don't know how I don't remember it. But as soon as you told me that, I did remember it. So I want to personally apologize to you in this open meeting for that.
A lot of.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate you taking my apology.
Thank you.
All right. We all have those senior moments, I'll tell you, man. But anyway, anybody else got any comments or anything? Okay. We'll go ahead and adjourn the work session for about five minutes. Everybody get, go to the restroom, get some water and we'll go ahead and start our new, I mean, our meeting here in just about five minutes.
I see your mouth.
Go ahead and also please allegiance, if everyone would stand please. Let's pray. Dear gracious heavenly father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, Lord, and to carry on the business of this county. And we just pray that you would help us, Lord, with clear hearts and minds, do the very best that we can. We know that, Lord, we're people and we can't always be pleased and, but we can always come together in love. And we thank you, Lord, for the community that we have. And when there is a need, how people come together is just such a great place to live and, and to live our lives. And we pray, Lord, as our schools begin back tomorrow, we pray for the, the teachers, we pray for all the students. We just pray that you would help them adjust again to another year. And Lord, as we get through this budget process and everything that we're doing in other counties all around us, going through the same thing. We just pray, Lord, that you would help, uh, help us do the very best that we possibly can for the people of Dade County. And Father, we pray for those who are sick. We thank you for Lamar, especially being able to be here tonight and, and, uh, Lord, just continue to bless him and, uh, him and Kathy. And Lord, we pray that you would bless our police departments, our sheriff's offices, Lord, the people that protect us every day and our men and women in uniform. Especially those on foreign soil tonight, keep them, bring them home safely to their families and bring them home, home whole. And we give you the praise in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Robert. This is a reg, regular scheduled meeting of the Dade County Board of Commissioners, which takes place same time on the first Thursday of each month. Proper notice, this meeting was given to our legal order the day Kenny Sentinel has been posted in the hallway. This time I do need a roll call. Mr. Lowry.
Here.
Mr. Hartland.
Present.
Mr. Goff.
Here.
Mrs. Bradford.
Here.
Chair is present. Anyone wanna come up and talk to us tonight? We got anything on your mind, come up and. George, you don't count. Matt, go ahead.
Does that mean nobody else?
Tell her about who you are, George.
I'm George Williams from, uh, the Alliance for Dade and just wanted to tell everybody about our Plumnelli art show coming up a week from this Saturday. We're pretty excited about it. It's our second one. We had twenty-one artists last year participate. This year we have forty-six. And we're taking over the high school common area and the cafeteria. It'll be completely filled with artists. It's free to the public and it's Saturday, August twelfth, from ten AM until four-thirty. So come and support our artists.
Now, that's where, what did you say? It's, it's in the commons area.
In the common and then right behind it into the cafeteria.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so we're staying off the gym floor. Apparently they've just refinished it and.
Yeah.
And Brent asked if we could stay off of it, so we figured out a way to do it. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, George. All right. Anyone else? Okay, if not, we'll move on. Uh, Mr. Lowry, you want to go ahead and give us your committee report, please?
Okay, uh, we, for our nine-one-one activity report, we had two hundred and twenty-five EM total EMS calls. At three hundred and eight, fire department calls. Police was at twenty-eight hundred and ninety-one. For a total call for the month of July were thirty-four hundred and twenty-four. And we had fifteen E nine-one-one addresses added this month. Our total was seventy-three so far this year. Now, I have been having some pretty serious health issues. Had to have a liver biopsy done. Thank God it came back clean. Gotta have pancreas done next Friday. So I appreciate everybody's prayers and thanksgivings and prayer words.
Thank you, Lamar, and you are in our prayers. Mr. Hartland?
Uh, for the month, we've had twenty-three electrical inspections. And then at the sports complex, we've got four baseball teams playing in a fall league in Jasper, eight, eleven, twelve, and a thirteen U teams. Soccer's starting up and football's starting up. They, they put a couple loads of safety code on some of the fields, getting ready for some of this fall practice that's going on. And then as not related to the sports complex, the, just remember you, we have a lot of the utility out, workers out working. Especially on Sand Mountain now, they've made their way up to there on three oh one, going out, putting poles and power lines up. A lot of times they're trucks sitting in the road. They've been at the top of the mountain for about two weeks now, right as you start off, got one lane blocked and, but so pay attention to them and try to, and slow down when you get in their work area and then tomorrow school starts back, so remember that.
Yeah.
Cause I'm the world's worst, that I don't.
I know, I know, it's easy, yeah, yeah. Also, um, I meant to tell you this, and Alex said this is something you, in your district, and I know you kept up with this, it's important. Is they've been up there, actually, Alex, you can tell us more and more about it from the back there, but, uh, working on our storm shelter right there. I mean, it's getting to be, I mean, it's a reality, it's, of course, it's already built, but they're putting the finishing touches on it. And, uh, how close are you, Alex? I know y'all spending a lot of time out there, you know, and it's real important to these people out there to.
Concrete porches working on this new to get that, we gotta form one more.
Yeah, you got water, uh, power, water, everything's on it there now, so.
They finished it up yesterday.
And you got, uh, you got fiber, you know, high-speed internet going in there. We'll have a, a screen hung before long, you know, like we got in South Dade, a big, you know, nice TV. Where you can keep up with the weather when people goes in there, so it's, it's good, you know, and.
And if y'all don't, and if you don't know where it's at, it is the road beside Davis School, go back up towards the Saddle Club and it is on the left.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Mr. Goff?
I formed my old football field almost. Well, you know, I, I thought every month I report on Splosh. Splosh was actually up over last month and last month was a great month, but it was up, uh, about six hundred, around six hundred dollars more. One thing I don't usually mention is lost, which is the other penny, the same penny. But I think we're talking about the mileage rate and taxes it, it warrants talking about. Now, it's three hundred and, uh, thir, uh, two hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. And sometimes people will say, well, how come it's different if a penny's a penny? Well, the guy sitting back there under his seat, he gets twenty percent of that penny. So that's the reason it's always less. But that, as it keeps staying up and going up, it helps us on our taxes. Don can do a better job of explaining that. But the lost affects is the property tax, just like some other uh, things that are paid into the county, uh, throughout the year, like, uh, insurance premium tax and that kind of thing. So, uh, we always say, buy at home. I know fuel's back up, it's up everywhere. I drove through Chattanooga yesterday. It went from three nineteen to three fifty-nine just overnight, just about. I don't know why. Uh, can't control, we don't control it, we never do. But, uh, the cost of living's high, but, uh, people are shopping. When you shop at home, even if you're buying your gas and it's two cents cheaper a little further down the road in another county or another state or whatever. Remember you're giving them all your money and you're taking away from ours. So we thank people for shopping at home and all these people that come through and, and stop at our restaurants and, and stop at our grocery stores and the linemen that are here for three months at a time, uh, that do all their spending. So that's the reason, you know, we can't always know exactly what brings it up, but it helps with a lot of things. Uh, Philip mentioned school starts tomorrow and I don't have to tell anybody that that starts the great traffic jams of Trenton, Georgia. Will begin. It's, uh, we, it's really not funny if you have to say it in it, I understand that, which is bad enough now with just what goes on on the interstate and so much. But tomorrow starts the school as well as the Trenton chat, traffic jam. Tomorrow night at the high school will be the meet the Wolverines. As Lamar said when he came in, it's already August, it's hard to believe. Football will start in earnest next week at Lakeview Ford Oath with our, and, and all, we're all a camp, we're all a community. and we're all a camp, we're all a community and that's the reason I point on what, I report on what goes on over there. They will play their first game next, scrimmage game next week against Lakeview Fort Oath. And then begin the regular season the following week, all the way in Athens, Georgia. So if you want to take a good road trip, that'd be a good one to take. But times are flying by us and we just, we just have to try to keep up with it as best we can, but that's all I got, sir.
All right, Ms. Bradford.
Okay, I've got quite a bit. So I wanted to start with that I was over at the recycling center today, talking to people and also was looking at the animal shelter land, which is looking good. So I know there's a lot of negative about what it's going to take to run it, but there's also the positive part of it, that it is something that we need and it's another service that that we're going to be able to provide hopefully soon. So on with the road department, just, I mean, Ted usually goes over everything pretty good, but there's three hundred and seven work orders. Kind of a bigger one that was in my area was the Creek Road. Clearing of that bridge. There was a big tree under there, sign replacements all over. Usually it's a rain day job and we've had a lot of rain days. Mowing, of course, and then the bridges all have been looked at and some signs of being remade, which I'm sure Ted's going to go over quite a bit. But to get into recycling, I wanted to kind of go over this. I probably won't do this every month, but this is kind of an estimate over the past six, seven, oh, six, seven, maybe eight months that we're trying to really nail down and just get a good look at. So cardboard, we do about two loads a month, which is an average of eight tons. Plastics, which I want to put in there, number, we only take number ones, which is water bottles, soda bottles, cooking oil containers. Also, please clean them, make sure that they're ready to go. Number ones only. And we do about one load a month, which is an average of three tons. Then we got number twos, plastics. So it's only number one and number two. Milk jug shampoo bottles. And we do an average of one load per month and that averages out to be about three tons. We talked to Top Rock, is that correct? Top Rock, the recycling center.
Oh, yeah.
Top Rock. I just want to make sure I had their name right.
I thought you meant who we were buying our credit area.
And she, she said, you know, we're not being charged right now. A lot of counties are being charged. And they're not charging us because we are cleaning the all the goods that are coming in. And there's a lot, a lot that has to be thrown away. I went over today and somebody threw in an old bottle of oil and from the top to the bottom, all that had to go in the garbage. Which is really heartbreaking because somebody cleaned all those other things. And we just don't have the manpower to go through and clean it all over again with oil on it. So I can't stress, make sure it's clean, make sure that you're putting in the right numbers. They, the lady said that one of the reasons why we're not getting charged is because our product that we're we're giving out, taking to them is clean and it's a good product. If there was a problem, we would probably be getting charged like everybody else. So definitely, definitely please make sure that you're.
When you say charge, you're talking about penalized? I mean, is that what?
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, when, when we're getting money back, it's more of like a rebate on any, like right now, we're getting rebates on cardboard, plastic, one into and, which I was about to say, the cans were actually have gone up. We've negotiated and have got them up. So please save your cans and bring them in. It could offset some of our other items that we're not, we're not getting anything for mixed paper, which is your magazines, mail, computer paper, newspaper. And that is usually one load per month. And then our metal and white appliances are one, one load every three months on average, which averages out to four to six tons a load. And then our poundage of loads of garbage that's going over the scales, we've, we've done one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight months and it was an average of around forty to forty-five. This okay, that's the total right here. So, yeah, July, we're still about in that range, thirty-nine. So it averages out anywhere, usually around forty to forty-five a month that's going across the scales. And that's hopefully all.
Okay.
I didn't forget.
Well, also, don't we, about the compactor, you know, how, what the, when we got that expected to come in as far as their plastic? And how we're going to actually oscillate between one and the other to make this work till we get, you know.
Yeah, that's definitely needs to be said. So one of the bundlers is down. So what's happening is we're trying to save over here, bundle this amount, but you have to have so much before you could put it in there for it to be a bail. So we're trying to save this and then kind of, and it's, it's a guessing game because you might have more plastic than you have cardboard one day, but you need to get the cardboard out, but then there's not enough. So we ordered a baler. It should get here around October. So it's even more important to make sure that your cardboard and all your plastics and your cans are clean because we're down a baler and it's a lot of work sorting through all that when it's not clean or the right number. And they won't take it if it's, if you bundle, put in a bundle and there's other numbers in there and they see it because they go through it and they look at everything up, they won't take it. It goes into the garbage. So so it's very important, be clean, look at the numbers. The signs are out there. And just bear with us for a while on the way it looks over there because it's going to get piled up.
Yep. Okay, your report. We've got, there's a lot of stuff going on in the county and we've been trying to get, we had the rain set us back on some of our projects and since this dry weather we've been here, Ms. Bradford said we did go down. We finished knocking out the pad for our animal shelter and that is just a dirt pad that's ready to and we do get ready to pour concrete and get the, you know, it's ready to go. It's compacted and we hope to move next week if nothing don't happen. Weather wise and all and get on this, our Lexington's actual, the dirt working all on it. And we will stay on that until we get it. We've got to get that thing up and about. So that was one thing. We had, we're trying to finish this road we've talked about. We've been working on it off and on through the rain. I think another couple of days, maybe three, they'll be finished with this emergency road up here for Belk Row. They, they, this, the rain changed everything. We thought we would be finished in paving by now, but it hadn't happened. So that, that right there, when we finish that, they're going to move back down to Clark Street here. Try to get those people open up. They were blocked in there the night, several hours and that won't take near the time that was. It's a short span, but we'll have those five, six, seven families there also where when it's blocked, when the train's blocked, they can get out there and we can get into them with a fire truck and animals. So that will tie Clark Street there into Vanguard right there to railroad track. Both these roads will strictly be emergency roads. They'll only be used when it, when the block, when the train is blocking. That because it is a hundred percent on railroad property on the right of way and they will have control of that. And of course, they've worked with us. They didn't have to give us the permission and all and to work with us on it. But it's, it's, it's an answer to prayer for all those people because unless you lived over there, you don't know how scary it is to actually go through one of the loved ones or whatever, you know, getting hurt or cut or whatever, or cardiac arrest and you can't get animals in. Or when your school bus pulls up and lets your children, your grandchildren off, they can't get home and that train's there. And here you got people handing them under the train and that, this, that's going to stop, you know, with this. So thank goodness for that. A lot of, a lot of things happening up on two ninety-nine right now as far as the, it's been, the foliage has been let go for a long time. A lot of the trees have gone over that road. If you travel that road, you know what I'm talking about. And if you're behind a tractor trailer, like when the interstate's closed and what it, they're constantly hitting the trees. So it's going to take them about two weeks. They started Monday evening and they've got the main bush acts there. So they're going to take all the way through the Tennessee line, clean all that up and, and deal them everything. And then from there, they're going on down south on eleven. We've got some issues down there. They started down there the other day, had week four last and did a couple of areas that were just totally blind. And they're going there and then we've got some issues out on Sand Mountain on some of the entrance coming in. So they're going to be here for a while doing that. So kind of be careful, you know, keep an eye on that because that is dangerous, running that machine or being behind it anyway. The, I said, I told you about Belk Row, the Lexington's administrative. We did get started Monday. This is something that's been talked about now for a year, almost a year, on our depot down here. It, it actually, you know, was someone, an arson had set it on fire. It's been almost a year ago. We have insurance on it and we've been kind of, we've been kind of waiting, you know, when materials shot sky high, we couldn't, you know, we, it's hard to get anybody even to bid on it because of, you know, the, it's not like building a house or even building on anything. We've got a, we're going, we decided we're going to handle this in-house. We got some different people going on, our electricians and all we're going but we did get started on that Monday and those pictures, oh, yeah, and they're on there. You can see they did a lot of work between Monday and today and we're putting, replacing all the, the main structure upstairs that was actually completely charred. A lot of it, I've got some really good pictures of some of the lumber that they had to cut out. You know, it, it was deceiving because some of those timbers, you know, they're four by twelves and all and they're full, they're only just barely charred enough that from the bottom, it looked like it was really terrible, but we're going to be able to salvage a lot of that. Even the metal that they pulled off so far and really, all of it really, we're going to be able to go back with ninety-nine percent of that metal. They're real, they're real taking it easy, taking it off. Now, we'll have to replace all the underneath and all that with OSB and all, but it's really going to be, you know, we get it back before too long and it's going to be come under the way what we, we thought. We'll be able to fix it with our, with our insurance money and that'd be great. Let's see here now. We've got the oh, yeah, I do, I got a call, actually an email and I actually got to compliment these people too about an hour before the meeting. And it concerns the south end of the county, which where we live, but where Robbins, Rogers had sold his place where he lived for many years. It was a very historic place. It's where Judge W.W. Hale had been there for years and he was known throughout the country as a marrying judge. He married way over five hundred couples, more than that, but that was, that many documented and so the lady that bought it, Leah Simmons, she had, actually had been working on getting it on the national registry, national historic registry. Which is kind of, it's a hard thing. It's just lots you've got to go through, but she was notified just a little while, what about noon today, that that it has qualified for that and it will happen. So that's, that's something. It's really, you know, and it's, they went back and did a lot of investigation as to the truth of actually of W.W. Hale. And he was actually, I mean, he was, he was real. Everything's been told about him was real and I mentioned this, I'm not going to be quiet, but thinking about that, I do remember my grandfather and I can remember, you know, Mr. Hale when he ran for election, he was defeated. And he was actually a JP, Justice's Peace, about years ago, Dade County, a lot of counties. You have Justice's Peace in each end of your county and they handle, you know, a lot of different legal matters, you know, and they can marry people. And he was the one in the south end. And so he specialized in marrying people and so when he was defeated, he could not, he'd been marrying people for like thirty years, you know. He couldn't accept that, you know, he couldn't, he'd been a part of his life, so he kept marrying people, you know. And a fellow by the name of Alvin White, he defeated him and, and Alvin White, he was there for one in Justice's Peace and so he was down the road from him. And he also married people, but he was going, you know, so finally after, I think they estimated it was probably at least fifty couples that were married by Mr. Hale, Judge Hale, out there somewhere, probably what he passed on, but that weren't married really. They thought they were, but they really, and they had to come up from Atlanta, you know, and the sheriff would go down and explain to him he's in violation of the law to stop that, you know, to stop him from marrying. So you know, that's pretty interesting, you know, to know that that actually happened here in Dade County. But but anyway, the, there's a lot going on. We got the Burke Halter gap. We've had a lot of issues with tractor trailers going up there from their GPS following them and just for some reason, the last month or so, we've got some pretty distinguishing signs that we're going to, a couple of them or three going up before we get there to try to turn these people around. I don't know what the deal is on it, but we've had a couple of issues that they made it all the way into the city of Lookout Mountain. And so, you know, I wouldn't, but anyway, that's, that's something. But other than that, you know, we're getting ready to finish these projects, get into our paving and go on before we know it, as someone said, you know, it'd be winter time, you know, it'd be October. So y'all got anything else you want to mention?
I got another, sorry. Also, there's been some confusion because we've changed over from the businesses making a choice to take their recycling to either recycling center or up at the top. And a lot of them have chose to just take it up and dump it because there's also other garbage in there. So I've had a lot of calls about garbage being put into the trash, but it's, it's usually either it's dirty or it's that situation where it's those companies dropping a lot of cardboard or you know, looks like recycling stuff up at the, the top. So I just wanted to clarify that, that it's, it is, that is happening. I mean, but it's their choice. They're paying for it, which, you know.
Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll move on. We'll call Ms. Mindy. Hi, what's, is she here tonight? Okay, that's good. That's unusual for her.
Yeah.
Because that lady likes to talk, now let me tell you. And she really, they do a lot at the library. It's pretty interesting listening to them. And how about Laura Beth Cunningham? Is there someone here with that name? Come up.
Well, we, we had a, we had a busy month this last month. We finished up our summer programs. We did a hike to Little, Little River Canyon. I try to do a lot of hikes. I have it in me to be in the outdoors and it kills me when kids are sitting in front of the TV and playing video games. So I try to drag as many kids as I can out and usually if you tell them there's a waterfall, they're, they're more likely to go. So we had some friends join us and drive up from Carroll County. A lot of these kids went to summer camp together and became friends. So we've started doing more with them, but we hiked to the bottom. It was quite a hike. I struggled a little, I'll admit to that one. But they had a really good time playing in the falls. And then the next week, we just went to Shirley Miller, which is a really easy hike. So we got little kids to go. So that way they can still participate in stuff too. And then we picked a really hot day to go to the Chickamauga Battlefield. We hiked around there and then we had a ranger guide us through the park. So they got to really in-depth learn a lot of what all those monuments, monuments actually mean. And then we had a picnic in Point Park and then there's museums up there too. So they learned about all the, the big Chickama, Chickamauga battle. We had our second chick-to-chicken camp. We had, I think, six new peop, new kids that I had never met before come to this camp. So I was really excited about that. But I had told them at the first chicken camp that if they all came back, I would hatch babies for them. So I had eggs in the incubator. So I had eggs in the incubator and babies were just hatching all day. So they really enjoyed that. Then we went to the Coker Museum. That was our last field trip. And I mean, it's a little hidden gem up there. I mean, I know a lot of everybody knows Corky, but he's got quite the collection. I was really impressed. And I've been to a lot of car museums and car shows because my husband is a car buff. But I was, I really enjoyed going to.
He's a top for two. It was going amazing.
Yes.
Yeah.
But we had a small crowd go to this. A lot of people canceled because there was some big dance competition that some of our regulars had to go to. But it was, it was a really interesting, I, I recommend everybody go up there and look at what they've got. Our homeschoolers meeting, I've been doing something, I call it the scrambled states of agriculture. So I've been picking a different state every month for a while. And, and I teach them everything about that state's agriculture. So we did Wisconsin this last month and talked about the cheese industry. And then I did my best to make them some mozzarella cheese for us to, to eat. Some liked it, some didn't. It was, but it was interesting to make cheese in front of. The next month, we're going to do the citrus of Florida. So. We made these awesome little sock worms at craft night. That was a lot of fun. And then I almost always do it in August, but next month, we're going to do the paintings with the water guns. I mean, that really brings them out. They think that's a blast. Our livestock team did start back up this last month. We have, the Hughes girls are showing goats. I think there's three of them now that are old enough. And then the two little Colin McKeggs little girls, they're showing goats this year for the first time. But the McKeggs are also really into pigs and they've, they've really started traveling with those pigs. I think they went to Louisville a couple of weeks ago and they actually did really well. So I'm glad that we're having more species. Hopefully we can get cattle back into the mix because that was always my favorite. We started forestry judging tonight. We had our first practice. We've doubled our team. So that's, I'm happy about that. We had four last year and now we're going to have eight. So we started that and then we'll go to competition on September fifth. The tri-state cattle months meeting will be in Dade this year. They're going to talk about the ins and outs of stalker cattle. Which is probably going to be a really good one if you're interested in that. Because if you do it right, you can actually make money doing stalkers.
When does that do today?
That is going to be August fifteenth, Tuesday night. Yeah. So if you're interested in that, that would be a good one to come to. If you want the mail, just RSVP by the Friday before. The beekeepers association meeting will be August twenty-first. That's a Monday at seven. They're going to have a new president. So we don't know what their program is yet, but everybody's welcome to come to that. And that's all I got.
I see a lot more bees out, like bee boxes out.
Yes, I have too. So they're going to do the census soon, like Georgia puts on this huge statewide census. So I'm interested to see. I think there's going to be a good increase in bees this year.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, that'd be cool though. You'll have to give us an update.
Yeah, I will soon as the census numbers.
Get, get report. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you.
And I gotta take off, I'm sorry, but we're taking Ms. Sarah when we're down to Atlanta to the office.
I'm surprised she's not driving herself.
Well, that's why we're taking her.
I'm telling you, she just goes. I mean, that's a much. All right, we'll move down to our financial report. Mr. Don Townsend, if you would go over that, please.
All right, as of the July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, the general fund had a balance of four hundred and two thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Certificate of deposits on hand was one point five million. So that's a total of one point nine million, two thousand, three sixty-five. Federal asset fund, US Treasury had a balance of zero. Share special fund, a balance of four thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. Drug abuse education fund, seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Supplemental juvenile services fund, twenty-eight thousand, eight thirty-one. Victim assistance fund, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Jail fund, eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars. Federal asset fund department of justice, zero. American Rescue Plan, the ARPA fund has a balance of one million, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Accommodations, hotel tax, three hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Employees' flexible spending account, twenty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And payroll account, seventy-four thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars. The two thousand fifteen project account has a balance of ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars. And the projects account for two thousand twenty-one, SPOS, sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. And the proceeds account has a balance of two million, three hundred and five thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. The next report is the first glance at how we ended June thirtieth. And so I'm going to spend a little more time on this than I normally would. You'll see that there's a lot of red on this report, which means we need to do some budget amendments. And, and there's a lot of seasonality that was built into these budgets, which come to fruition here on the last day of the year. This is a report, the income statement as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. The actual report for June was five hundred, seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. Now, this is revenues. We had budgeted one million, one hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. So that's a shortage. Six hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four. The number to look at though, the, to really tune in here to is the year-to-date. And that's thirteen million, two hundred and nineteen thousand, forty-five dollars. And we had budgeted thirteen million, three hundred and fifteen thousand. So that's after the current, that three, thirteen, three fifteen is actually after the budget amendments that we were aware of. We'll have another budget amendment for this budget. Typically, it's September, October, and it's right around when the auditors get here, which they are scheduled to come in in October. But that is a shortage right now on revenues of ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. Now you see that the percentage attained is at ninety-nine point two eight percent. So right now, we are short ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. There are, I don't have the number in front of me, but there are some accounts receivable still scheduled to come in, which would, of course, bring that up to a hundred percent. And then we would be even. But I don't think we will make it to a hundred percent this year. Some years we exceed a hundred percent, but I, it doesn't appear like we're going to this year. And also comparing budgets, I know that we look, I think Philip asked me this earlier this week about that. The thirteen, I, I'm not sure what number we talked about that day, but the last year's budget, I mean, the current year's budget FY twenty-four is fourteen thousand, five hundred. But the actual year-to-date budget as we stand now FY twenty-three, knowing that we're going to have another budget amendment. But right now, it's thirteen thousand, three fifteen. So that is a difference, an increase from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four of one, one million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand. And just to clarify that from earlier in the week. Also, under expenses, we'll take a look at that. We have for the month of June, one million, fifty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. We've budgeted one million, forty-two thousand, seven thirty-one. Again, short or over budget, twelve thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. But again, looking at year-to-date is the most important number there. It's thirteen million, five hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. We had budgeted thirteen million, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. And that's a shortage of nineteen million, eight hundred and fifty-one. I'm sorry, under budget, nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. So you'd ask what, how much did we have at the end of the year? Right now, it's right at twenty thousand. We've probab, I know we do have a few more bills. Most bills have come in in the month of July, for the most part, for accounts payable. But there will be, we have by law to leave the books open until September first. And I mean, for instance, one came in today. I don't think it was much, but so we'll, we'll be, that one will be close. Hopefully, we will be right under budget. But regardless, we'll have to do a budget amendment. Looking, comparing the, if you take the, if you see that bottom, we don't talk a lot about that. But the yellow says the general fund cash projection. But just looking at that, comparing that from the revenue side to the expense side for, just looking at the bottom line, because that's really what matters, is the year-to-date. So taking, what we actually collected was thirteen million, two hundred and nineteen thousand, forty-five dollars. Subtracting out what we spent, thirteen million, five hundred and forty-five thousand, one forty-eight. That is over three hundred and twenty-six thousand, one oh three. Budget-wise, it's a difference of two hundred and fifty thousand. And that, when that happens, that's your fund balance. That's where we would have to take that. Now, if that's the, if that were to be the case, and I'm not saying it is yet, because again, we've got some more accounts receivable and some more expense to come in. But once those settle, if that were to be the case, then two hundred and fifty thousand would hit our fund balance. And the same is true that we've already balanced this year for two hundred thousand. So that's a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar hit in a two-year period. And that's the first time that will have happened since two thousand and eleven, I think. Two thousand and twelve, eleven, eleven, twelve, somewhere in there. Which is not, not what you want to see. Because you can get yourself in a hole pretty quick on that situation. And you're thinking, well, what caused some of that? Well, the differences between last year's budget FY twenty-three and the proposed budget this year, and, and then I'm talking about that one point, one eight five million, is the expenses in employee. We had four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in a cost of living allowance. There was two hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars in expenses in just plain general supplies. And that was basically and simply, they just went up in price. Roads was the leader on that at two hundred and four thousand. I mean, the products we buy, cold mix, hot mix, whatever, it's just more expensive. Two hundred and four thousand more. Ambulance was eighteen thousand, seven hundred. And jail was thirteen thousand, two hundred. So that made up the two hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred in general supplies. Also, landfill fees did increase as we were told they would increase because the CPI went up. And that was up a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Health insurance did increase six percent. It's a hundred and five thousand. Contracted services also went up. That's thirty-nine thousand in administration, twenty-eight thousand, six hundred in E nine one one and fourteen thousand in emergency management. Now, when you talk about contracted services, you know, some of those things, they're maybe an offset to the revenue. So sometimes you get money on both sides. But I'm just, I only can see the expense side right now. Gasoline, due to an increase in gas prices, went up fifty-two thousand, six hundred. Supplements did increase last year. The fire departments, of course, we know we, we raised those this year at twenty-one thousand overall. And then the district attorney, as we talked about, they're trying to, they're very short on district attorneys and assistant district, district attorneys, that is. And we increased their supplement by eighteen thousand. So that was a total of thirty-nine thousand for those two things combined. And then elections increased thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred. And then a twenty-four thousand dollar increase to inmate medical. They just had twenty-four thousand more in expense last year. Actually, they actually had sixty-four thousand dollar increase in there. But we're budget, only budgeting twenty-four thousand dollar increase in FY twenty-four. So hopefully, no one will get in a fight or whatever that, whatever causes incidents over there or has a heart attack. You have a heart attack in jail, taxpayers pay for it. I mean, you know, I don't know if everybody realizes that or y'all realize that, but that happens unfortunately. So anyway. That's a little more in depth, but that is our June thirtieth. We, we will refine that. Let's see, the September meeting, hopefully we'll have our final numbers in for the year. And then so next month, you'll have really two reports, one for August and one for June. We'll go back and pick, I mean, I'm sorry, one for July and then we'll go back and pick up June again, just to compare it. Local option sales taxes month that came in was two hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. Special purpose local option sales tax was three hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. And you have the two thousand fifteen and the two thousand twenty-one tracking worksheets there that you may review. And but as noted earlier, we do have a surplus, I mean, it's not a surplus, it's the balance view of sixty-four thousand, four hundred and seven dollars to the fire departments. Overall though, based off, remember that first number I reported earlier, there, there is ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars left in the two thousand fifteen SPOS. Now granted, if they can or cannot use, I mean, I get that some, one department there was trying to save their money. One or two departments maybe trying to save their money to put that money plus their SPOS money for two thousand twenty-one together in order to buy pumper trucks. But if there's a portion there that could be used, as Commissioner Goff pointed out. And it's upwards, the maximum amount would be ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars, which is the balance of that account. That's just something for you to remember and consider in the future for that fire tower trading center. And then looking at the tax commissioner's report, this is for the entire year. We had budgeted five million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred. Revenues for year-to-date have come in at five million, four hundred and seventy, and seventy-seven dollars, ninety-five cents. So the variance there is currently at twenty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars. And again, that's ninety-nine point five four percent. So you see, I mean, some of those monies. Tax commissioners department's a little bit different. When the monies don't come in in the current fiscal calendar year, they will get put into the next year. But what happens there is it would pass, pass due taxes that would have, most likely have interest and penalties tied to them. So the, so that some of those monies come with, we anticipate so, certain amount or a certain percentage. And for it to be within one percent is well within the variance. And that's an excellent accountability in the tax commissioner's office. That concludes the report.
Okay. Any questions? Corrections? Not all your internal motion to approve our monthly financial report. They have a motion to approve. Make a motion to approve. Tell Mr. Hartland. Do they have a second?
Second.
Okay. Call vote, Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Hartland?
Yes.
Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
Chair of the, yes, motion carries. Robin, if you got anything, force or not, anything to maybe go? Okay. Okay, I want to finish business, do business. The reading of the minutes of the last month's regular meeting, any special call meeting will not be required since all commissioners have been furnished copies in advance. The minutes of public record is available for viewing in the county commission office. The minutes are included in the consent agenda. At this time, Mr. Townsend, would you go or consent agenda? And we'll entertain a motion.
Entertaining that.
Approval of the agenda as presented. We have the approval of the previous meeting minutes. Other view, approval of the personal stash report. Approval of the court house restoration project is presented by Mr. James Levens of BCM. And the announcement of the military. First is a public hearing, August the tenth. First will be at eleven AM. Second will be at six PM. And then the third and the final public hearing for that should be August the seventeenth at five PM. And then a special public to be held. Consider the adoption of the two thousand twenty-three military would be held at five thirty. I don't yet have the schools information, so I can't talk about that. And then ordinance number zero eight dash zero three dash twenty-three, the mod fill accommodation excise tax as presented.
Okay. Any questions? Great. Okay. Any questions? Corrections? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to pass to, uh, can pertain to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. I have a motion approved. I have a second.
Second.
Okay, got a second. Motion second. Call a vote, Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Dartland?
Yes.
Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Okay. No executive session tonight. Y'all got anything you want to add before we adjourn tonight? I don't think that matters. Okay. Appreciate everyone being here. Uh, as Phillip mentioned, there's a lot of stuff going on in this county, a mountain, or the mountains in the valley, uh, between the power company working and all the work that's going to be going on for the next year or so. And, uh, and a lot of utility stuff besides that and plus our motors. So, uh, just kind of be careful and, uh, remember, uh, also this is the weekend of the world's longest yard sale and it's, uh, uh, mainly on lookout, you know, coming down the lookout mountain parkway. But, uh, be careful out there and, uh, try to be patient with people, because I know out there today, there's a lot of people stopping and going and so, uh, just be careful out there. And, uh, we do appreciate, uh, the, uh, if y'all are fine with it, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. Do they have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Call a vote, Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Dartland?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you.